Good evening. I'd like to call the board of selectmen's meeting, January 6, 2020, to order at 6:04 PM. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A moment of silence.
Paul, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, I would like to make it to the board to move first public input to the second public input, where the only agenda item is the warrant articles. We just received them as it is, so it's hard to have them out there for the public to talk about until we review them and discuss them. Does that sound fine with the board?
Fine with me.
Got a motion to second to that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made in second to move the first public input to the second public input, seconded by Paul or Cheryl. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ruben, just as a, I guess, a formal call to order.
Yes.
We'll call the Budget Committee meeting to order.
Do the Pledge of Allegiance yet?
I don't think we have to do that again, but the agenda, again, I'll move that we approve the budget committee portion of this agenda, which follows the selectmen's.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I guess at this point, we'll just follow suit.
Okay.
It works.
First item of business is the 2020 default budget approval. Basically, the default budget would have to be amended, according to the town administrator, because the town council, we'd asked the question of the town council and DRA to look at it. DRA basically had sent it back to us to have our legal counsel look at it, and he would, he could go along with the police revolving fund for cruises going down to $1, but leaving the stipend alone as to where it is being used. The only thing I have to say in retrospect to that is the stipend had not been being used, because that's what we funded the pay increases in 2019, if you folks remember. Fire chief said he did not use those because he's been taking the money out of the salary line items. So that's the only thing that I disagree with him on that, but maybe he didn't, was not aware of that.
Okay.
So I'd have to ask the town administrator at this time, the default budget as presented, does that include moving that down to $1 in revolving fund?
Yes. Yes, it does.
So the default budget for this year, 2020, be $8,90,865. I have a motion to that effect to approve.
So move.
Wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, on new business, would be the 2020 warrant articles review and recommend. As at the last meeting, we had invited the Budget Committee to come up with us, hear our conversations, so they did not get the warrant articles the night of their budget hearing like last year that happened. And there was some confusion whether or not it was a legal meeting last year with the Budget Committee, which it was, but this way here, they hear what the warrant articles will be, so when they have their meeting, they'll be fully aware of what they are. First one is benefit pay expendable trusts. To see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of $25,000 be added to the benefit pay expendable trust fund previously established in 2001, said funds are recommended by town auditors they use to pay benefits for cured by town employees and redeemed when they leave employment with the town in accordance with the town personnel policy.
Liz, how much are we holding in that fund?
If you remember, last year, the warrant article was for $50,000, and this year, the finance manager recommended it be lowered down to $25,000, because in 2019, didn't have to use most of it. So there's $55,763 in there right now.
If you remember, in 2018, we used quite a bit of it, because the finance officer that'd been with the town for many years had left, so yeah.
Yeah, and when we run out of money in that account, then it's taken out of the budgets, the applicable budgets.
Folks have any conversation on it?
I think we have some potential retirements that could be coming that would be sizable.
Do you want to allow the Budget Committee to ask questions at this time too, or no?
I'm fine with that.
You folks have any questions?
Done at once.
If not, do I have a motion to approve the $25,000?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We won't be voting tonight.
I didn't think there would be.
What was the vote, five votes?
Five votes. Article B. I might as well just read that. Pat, I am going to read in your budget for the operating budget.
On Article B.
On Article B. Because if you notice, on Article B, the way it's written right now, there's nothing in there for an operating budget.
Right.
So I'll be reading your budget into that. Shout out to town, raise appropriate and operating budget, not including appropriation by special warrant articles and other appropriation voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted in the warrant article as amended by vote of selectmen. And should read $8,267,897.
$97,000.
For the purposes set forth herein, should this article be defeated, the default budget should be... Is that the right one?
Yep.
$8,000, $8,90,865, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action on the Board of Selectmen or by law, where the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13-X and XD1 to take up issues of a revised operating budget only. This article does not include special or individual articles addressed, recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Any discussion? Only thing I'll say between this budget and our budget is about nine, a little over $9,000. Do I have a motion as read?
I make a motion that we accept it as read.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article C, New Riverside Cemetery Engineering. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $50,000 be added for the purpose of engineering needed at the New Riverside Cemetery in order to lay out all required work that needs to be done on the site for expansion and usage, such as utility corridor for all utilities needed on the site, interior travelways, roads, layout of lots, and more. This special warrant article will be non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:7V1, V.I., and will not lapse until the engineering project is completed or by December 31, 2024, whatever is sooner. This is from our meeting this past summer down at the new cemetery, looking at it. It's not moving any more forward, and we all, we discussed that possibly it's time to maybe bring in engineering for men to, you know, lay it out for us to see the best way to go.
I agree. Motion to approve Article C is written.
Second. Motion to approve Article C as written, and seconded by Phil Whitman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $100,000 be added to the Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 1973. Do you folks want me to read the rationale for this, on each one? On this one?
I don't think so. I'd like to know the balance, though. I apologize, I didn't bring my...
I didn't either, so, yeah, I didn't. I was hoping for a new one, actually, this one.
I only have until the end of November. Do you have a more current balance? So as of the end of November, would be $524,931.3.
Any more to be expended from that when the folks get the new truck? You guys getting new truck, or has your truck been delivered? Well, I thought I could ask you.
It has not been delivered yet. I don't know when, I don't know the payment structure.
Chief, could I have you come up and answer that question for us?
Let me ask you this. I can ask a question to you, and then we'll look through what delivers us. Can I explain it?
Gonna have to, yeah, but at least we'll have knowledge firsthand.
Normally, yeah, normally, we would ask.
Chief, out of that $524,000, almost $525,000, any, that can be used on new truck when it's delivered next year?
Not on the new truck, but there is a, the Ranger is scheduled to be replaced this year.
The Ranger, which vehicle is that?
That's the Polaris Ranger, the ATV with the tracks on it that we use to go up Mount Major.
Doesn't have to be replaced this year? Do you think you could get a couple more years out of it?
I don't think, I'm not sure we'd actually make it through the rest of this year.
Okay. The only reason I ask that is like the forestry truck last year. We replaced the forestry truck, which probably could have gotten us another two to three years, but the money would have been there for a new truck, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the fire chief?
This may be an unfair question for you without stats in front of you, but on average, how many Mount Major rescues do you think we average per year?
Probably between 20 and 25 a year.
That is necessary.
This unit, I mean, it just saves a lot of time, manpower, and the reason it needs to be replaced is just how much we have used it. It's very well beat up.
Do you transport in that?
Just down the mountain.
Is that the only time you use it, pretty much?
It's also set up for, if we have to go off-road, for a forest fire.
What year is it?
2007.
Now, didn't the association or something buy that?
Yep, the association bought it.
Didn't get you to replace it?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
What's the price on that?
To replace it, it's just under $30,000.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's a big help on Mount Major.
Yeah. Part of that is the track kit, the trailer kit, and some of the accessories that come with it.
Well, so use it. Other than that, though, I mean, I've seen it go up and down Jesus Valley Road, out to Straightback Mountain, it's not too there, so I mean, it's used all over the place.
It's used on the, basically, mountain rescues and places we really can't just drive into.
Can't drive into.
And to transport people who are severely injured.
Yeah, transports us up there, and it helps bring them down.
Right.
When you say you don't think it may even last this winter, what is it that's...
It's good. It's got some overheating issues. It's got some throttle cable issues.
Dave?
Dave?
You can't get away that easy.
It runs okay, but when we start working it hard to get up the mountain, it really has a hard time.
It's time. It's got its juice.
Yeah.
It's 12-year-old rescue.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing that I will say on the CIP end of this, is I don't know if you have those big charts with you, but those will actually show you how some years that bottom line gets very, very thin. But again, trying to be as financially responsible as possible, we were kind of dealing with those very thin lines through the beginning of this process until it really gets rolling and things can be comfortable. But it does get very thin, I believe, in 2024. Somewhere along those lines, there's another fairly large purchase where it goes right down to, I want to say, about $100,000, so.
Motion to approve Article D is written.
Second. Motion made to approve Article D as written, seconded by Virgil McDonald. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article E, Fire Department Ladder Truck. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $100,000 be used towards the purchase of a ladder truck. Said funds to come from undesignated fund balance, which will not have an impact on the tax rate. The article is contingent upon receiving award of a FEMA grant. Should the grant funding not be received, this article is null and void.
Paul?
Yes?
How far have you gone with that application process, and how, have you heard anything?
The grant process still has not, they haven't opened the date yet. It was supposed to be in November. They moved it to the first week of January. They haven't opened it yet. I have the application, basically, more than like three-quarters done. It's just a matter of copying and pasting to get it into the official application. It's been looked at by our grant writer, and he says we're on the right track.
Oh, this, this type of grant, is this like a first come for a serve basis?
No.
Or is this allocated so much?
It's looked at by three tiers of people. So it has to go through a computer process, and it goes through a peer review, and then it goes through another professional review. And it's really based on need.
And you got an indication that our need was extreme?
Yeah. He believes our need is up there, and they put this type of truck higher up on the list, so. But unfortunately, nothing is guaranteed.
But this is a no-impact, no, no risk.
Correct.
Yeah.
Should we not get the grant?
And I'll just read out part of this rationale. The article is to enable the purchase of $1.1 million fire department ladder truck, because the current 30-plus-year-old ladder truck is no longer able to be used for any type of an emergency. A FEMA grant is opening for the application in November, the town will be applying for funds from FEMA grant. The grant amount provided could be $750,000. The town would need to come up with the remaining 350. By using $250,000 from existing funds in the Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, remaining $100,000, this warrant article will be taken from the undesignated fund balance, which will result in no impact to the tax rate.
And you said we have over 40 buildings in town that require...
Yeah, there's over, you know, one of their questions is how many four-story buildings you'd have, and there's over 40 of them, which kind of surprised me until I went out and started counting them. But as far as we're concerned, it's that long reach, it's the long door yards. That's really the bigger deal, the chimneys, and then the metal roofs that we really are unsafe on.
And did we have a call this weekend that required us to bring a ladder truck from another...
Yeah, this weekend, we had New Durham's ladder in town on Coffin Brook Road.
Apologize, any more questions?
Phil?
Nope.
Sidney?
Virgil?
Budget committee?
One thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We keep using this word of doesn't affect the tax rate. Well, $350,000 that was raised by the taxes, it did affect the tax rate at one time. There is $350,000 there that is tax money.
But the, are you all set? I read this as saying, you know, this particular thing will not affect the tax rate. Is that...
Won't make the tax rate go up, no, because the money will already be sitting there from the general.
It's basically authorizing a movement.
Yes.
From A to B.
But originally, part of the tax rate was affected by one way or another, whether it was five years ago or three years ago.
Right, which is really a function of financial planning, anticipating at some point in time, you're going to need to replace the thing.
I think that's what Bob was looking to.
What's the undesignated fund? What is that?
So that's the fund balance. It's like a savings account that is held. So at the end of the year, when the, when the books close, whatever's left over, the surplus in the general fund goes into the fund balance, and the DRA requires that the town keep a certain percentage in the fund balance.
A certain percentage of the annual budget?
Yes.
Yes, of the school and the towns.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So that percentage would be a percentage of the Alton portion of the school budget?
Correct.
Like the Prospect Mountain?
Correct. And that normally, if I'm not mistaken, is right around 7% is what they recommend.
That's the minimum. Well, I think it's like 5% up to 17% or something.
I think we're running at about 3, 3.5% right now.
So it's money that's going to sit either way.
Any other further questions? None, I'll call the article E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do motion. Accept it as written.
Just delete, sorry. Motion was to approve Article E by Sidney, seconded by Virgil McDonald. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article F, Grounds and Maintenance Vehicle Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if
the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $23,000 to be added to the Grounds and Maintenance Vehicle Equipment Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 2019. This is all, this is to replace the F-350 2008 pickup truck, which has over 109,000 miles. In 2020, with a similar vehicle, approximately $45,000 for the new vehicle. Currently in a balance of $22,500 is in that account. And I'd like to bring Kelly up, just to ask her a question on this. Kelly, I want to economy redundant with my questions tonight for each department. Do you think you can get any more? It's not that I'm against this, but do you think you can get another year or two years out of that truck, or does it need to be replaced this year?
Well, I, I can't really answer that question as far as can we get another year or two. We would put money into it, if that's what the town's wishes are. There are also two other vehicles. There's a Grand Caravan and also a 2015 pickup truck. So this fund will fund other vehicles. I think that it's important to put this money aside. I can tell you some of the problems that the vehicle's having right now. It is a usable vehicle. It's, the four-wheel drive works, four-by-four works, and the dump body works. It is a work truck. It has a brand-new steering pump and a new transmission lines. The electronics in the dash are an issue. That's an issue that we have right now, so if there's continual problems with that, that'll need to be fixed. There is some rust, but that can be fixed as well. So if we were not able to purchase a new truck, we would continue to use this truck. And if we were able to get a new truck, this truck would still be in use for either another department or until it didn't work anymore. So I would say that it is usable, but we do want to plan for its replacement. It is, it is 12 years old.
So you wouldn't be trading it in towards another vehicle or selling it?
We would not be trading it. We have two seasonal workers that we would, that do not have vehicles, so, and to be most efficient, I personally like to have employees have their own vehicle to go do individual tasks. So it's, in my opinion, to be more efficient to have additional vehicles to send people individually to do work. There is team projects, but if people are riding around two people all the time together, that's not the most efficient use of their time.
You have a question?
Yes, Sidney.
You mentioned there's a caravan?
Yes.
And then a 2015 vehicle?
Yes, a 2007 caravan.
When is that scheduled for replacement?
It's actually not even in the CIP, so...
Is that the one that we got for...
$5,000? Yes. That's what the custodian's using.
Right.
So that vehicle does need to be replaced eventually. And this $23,000 will bring the fund balance up to just enough to purchase a new truck, and then there will be nothing in there. Correct. That is correct.
So on the CIP plan, when is your next purchase?
The, the, the next truck was for 2023, so that would be putting money aside for that truck.
And that would be the 2015 truck?
Yes. And that would be eight years old in 2023, and the intention for that truck would be to go to the cemetery department, if it's still able to.
But we have no plans for the caravan?
Correct. And, and so my recommendation would be that if this was not funded, that we would still need to put money in that fund for the other vehicles at some point.
So funding it doesn't necessarily mean purchasing it?
Exactly. And if you're, if you decide next year that you don't want to purchase a 350 or 3500 pickup truck, and we can get another year or two, then that would be the decision that you make, that the funds are there in case it would need to be replaced, in case there isn't a choice.
There's also a possibility to buy a later model used.
There is definitely that possibility, yes.
The price that you have there, 22.5, you get a fairly decent...
Yes.
In good shape, low mileage.
Yeah, we are open to used vehicles. We have purchased used vehicles in the past. So we're not of the impression or understanding that we would need a new vehicle.
Has the town mechanic given an estimate on how much work needs to go into this one?
I have not asked the town mechanic for that information.
109,000 miles is really not that much, in today's standards, for your average pickup truck should go, if well-maintained, 200,000.
It is also a plow truck and a work truck that's used more than a normal person's truck, I would think, too. There's different drivers using it. It's used most days of the week. Even on Saturday and Sunday in the summer, it's used.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Selectmen first. Any other questions?
Mr. Holt?
Is, is that a plow truck?
Yes, it is.
You're going to replace it with another plow truck?
Yes, yes, it would be replaced with a plow truck, with a dump body as well.
So you're adding on to your fleet?
Well, I'm not necessarily saying we're adding on to this fleet. The town would retain this truck for other use in other departments. We also have two seasonal people that don't have a vehicle, so perhaps it would go there, it could go to solid waste, or if there's a truck down at another department, it would be available. The highway department has...
Most of the trucks, Bob, that, instead of us trading them in, we send them wherever we need them, to Kenny's, to the Paxton Ranch.
Cemetery.
We move them around cemetery. Wherever they needed, they, that's where they'll go.
I will, again, from the CIP perspective, because I was on that committee as well, one of the other larger theories with replacing these vehicles, I'm sorry, at 100,000 miles, was to take advantage of full trade-in value and not get into the steering pumps, the transmissions, the rear ends, the heavy rust work, so that we were trading these vehicles in while they still had equity in getting brand-new vehicles. I will say that if you haven't taken a peek at the state bid pricing list, it is incredibly lower than what you or I would ever see at a dealership anywhere. So especially when you look at, you know, buying a used vehicle, especially if it's like a one-ton dump, you know, how those get worked in a commercial environment, it is pretty favorable to look at the state bid list. So that's where a lot of the CIP stuff came from, and why we came up with that eight-to-10-year figure on pickup trucks, was that there was still some value when you go to trade it in, or potentially in some circumstances, trade it to a different department. So just some food for thought as well on that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. The, on the state bid process, when you get a vehicle through them, do you have an option to lease it rather than rent it?
I haven't...
I'm sorry, rather than buy it?
I haven't looked into that. I was just providing an estimate from, this was from Poland specifically for this price.
The reason why I ask that is, is the vehicle that you're replacing at 12 years old, you know, my first thought is, you know, that's kind of an old vehicle, you know, and I'd have safety concerns and getting to a point of, you know, you keep throwing good money after bed. But, you know, if you're looking at roughly a 10- or 12-year life for a vehicle, you're talking 9,000 miles a year. And usually, on most leases, 9, 10,000 miles a year is a pretty attractive amount for a lease. If you're doing 15,000 a year, hmm, probably better to buy it. Okay? So, you know, I would just mention that as, you know, food for thought, okay? And the other is that you mentioned that you had the caravan, okay, which was, and I'm sorry, you told me, but I didn't write it down.
2007.
2007, okay, so 13 years old.
Right. It has 120,000 miles.
Okay. Sometimes, you know, 120,000 miles, highway miles, is a little different than 120,000 miles of, you know, around town or snow pile, you know, miles. Are we hauling people in that?
We're not.
Okay, so, all right. So again, I would just highlight this.
One person, the driver.
Well, okay, I meant, is, you know, as opposed to like, you know, a bunch of people in the back. Yeah, okay. So again, I would always raise concerns on a 13-year-old vehicle, you know. I would just have concerns on that.
We don't drive, we don't drive it out of town.
Okay.
Any other further questions?
I have a motion to approve Article F as written.
So move. I have a second. Moved by Phil and seconded by Virgil. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Highway Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $350,000 be added to the Highway Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 1981. Rationale, the Capital Reserve Fund was established to repair, replace highway vehicles and equipment. Breakdown of the requested amount is a safe designated amount each year towards the purchase of pieces. 172,000 for a six-wheel Mack dump truck, 12-year lifespan. 88,000, one-ton dump truck, 10-year lifespan. Do I have any questions?
Balance in that, Laura?
Matt is here to answer any questions, if you have any.
So the balance, as of November 27, is 78,179.65.
Do we owe any more? Matt, if you can come up front for us. If you want, Mr. Rubitz, you can always ask him to come up, Mr. Moore, if you want.
Is he...
He's not working, though.
He's not released from...
He's not released.
I don't think we should.
Hi, Matt. Hi, Matt.
Hi.
Do you know if there's any more monies that are owed out this year on any trucks that came in this year or no?
I can't really answer that.
I don't believe so with the balance you have in there. That's what we appropriated last year.
You can blame it. All owed out.
Now, the six-wheel Mack that I read out, 172, is that truck to be replaced this year or is it, can it be used for another couple of years? I'm going to be redundant with that same question.
Yeah, it's pretty beat up.
Do you have an indication from the town mechanic?
Yeah, I really didn't look into it. Jumping in here kind of...
Sure, it's your first go-around, it's okay.
So you don't know what's been, you don't know what's been put into the truck this year for maintenance or anything like that?
We were doing CIP.
Yep.
This truck wasn't in that good a shape, and it needed to get replaced.
Now, the body on the back's rusted up pretty bad.
A lot of rot on it.
Yeah.
Do you have any familiarization with that fat one you said on the CIP?
I know it's the oldest in the fleet, I do believe, at this point. And again, rust and rot and just general...
What year it was, anybody?
I bet. It's a '06, I think.
So basically, 14 years after this year.
Looks like 2000...
That truck's a 2000. So it would be a six-wheel dump truck Mack, 12-year lifespan, 2000, due to be replaced in 2020, according to the CIP charts that you all got the other meeting.
I have no problem with that, and I know on the one-ton, I have no problem, only because they've had their problems with that one-ton running along for the last five years.
Got more than a time out of that six-wheel.
Oh, you did, yes.
Guess so.
What's the, does anybody here have the CIP in front of them? You do? After, after these two replacements, if those were both to happen in 2020, what's the next year that something would come up and what is it?
Next year?
CAT excavator.
Yep.
And a 10-wheeled dump truck international.
Do we have approximate prices on those?
The CAT excavator is 240,000, and the 10-wheeler is just under 200,000. The CAT is a 2006, and the dump truck, the 10-wheeler, is a 2009. And there are a couple more the following year, and so on and so forth.
So if we fund this... If we fund it, the 350 added to the fund balance and purchased both trucks in 2020, that's going to leave us a balance of 168, 179.
And that's like a 350 again, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's usually pretty consistent year after year, so as not to spike the tax rate, you want to keep the deposit.
No, I mean, on the CIP plan, it's 350, 350, and then it cuts way back.
It does start going down in 2024.
Right.
It gets to that threshold where if something major breaks down, we can replace it, but it's also in the plan. Kind of, we get to that level point where the CIPs start to drop and everything, this kind of functions moving forward.
The first five years of CIP were going to be the painful ones.
And I think running consistent with that was either last year or the year before, when I was on the CIP, we kind of acknowledged, things have sort of slid a little. And so the goal was to try and get it back, accelerate a little bit of some of that reserve, you know. So then, as I view this, is the immediate proposed purchase is 260, the two pieces that are here, and then the reserve of 90,000 would then go into the overall fund.
Any further questions or discussion?
Do I have a motion to approve Article G?
As submitted. As written. Second.
Okay. Reuben made the motion, second by Virgil McDonald. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Article H, Highway Road Construction Capital Reserve Fund, the seat the town vote to raise appropriate sum of 950,000, he added to the Highway Road Construction Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 1998. Said amount is partially offset by revenues from the Highway Block Grant estimated to be 201,000. This is an annual appropriation that provides for the reconstruction of existing roadways. It's last year's, remember, that was defeated, and we went back to doing maintenance, which was a great job getting some maintenance done.
A lot of work.
So what is the, I have no problem doing this. I think, though, the town should look at maybe going back to some privatizing of this, especially if Roberts Cove Road is done.
Definitely.
And you got, last year, we had the townsfolk voted to have us pave Hayes Road last year, but we couldn't, we had no funds. I think that'd be one of the roads we have, the town would have to look at, and that depends after town meeting, what, who the board is at that time. So I can't make that decision for them, but I think the money should be put in there this year to put back in. My personal feeling, sitting on the outside, I think some of this should go back out to private. I looked around Guilford, Laconia, which Laconia's a city, so I'll throw them out, but Guilford is roughly a little bit larger than us, but they still go out and have it privately done. One is Busby Construction Company up there, they do a lot of their work.
We've had them here, Busby.
Yep. They did all the dorm road. I don't see many, many out there that the towns themselves are doing it.
No, but we're also getting twice the roadway mileage than we do when we're hiring contractors. We had them in here when we did Wolfboro Road, it was 1.2 a mile for Wolfboro Road, and we were getting between three and four miles doing it ourselves.
What was the last part of the sentence, three to four miles, what?
We were getting three to four miles doing it ourselves.
Oh.
And to hire it out, we were getting just about a mile a year for the money.
Yeah, just in, just in principle, it would seem to me that it would make more sense you to do it in-house.
But the problem is... Just the first year that we've got a full crew.
Yeah, I understand, you just interrupted me.
But the problem is, we let our maintenance go, and that's one of the reasons we wanted maintenance, which you went along with this year, only because the ditches were filling in so bad, the brush was growing in. Granted, we did not have full crews all the time the last two years, I will say that, too. But a lot of times, when we go to do this, when it gets near the end of the year, we have to pull the whole crew, put them on road reconstruction, we're lacking our maintenance on the other end. So, you know, this is, that's my personal feeling, I feel the town should look at going back to, because I think Roberts Cove Road would be a little much for the town to do.
So then you're suggesting using outside contractors to augment the efforts of the town simply because the volume of work that's needed is greater than what the town can provide?
Correct. Two is, going outside, we also have to do engineering, so that the outside contractors know what we're doing. I don't believe we're doing that much outside engineering for our, even our town guys. We're doing it by what the highway agent field needs to be done, the roads have to be dug up, the catch basins have to be put in. I don't know if we're doing that much engineering anymore as to what we're doing just for what would be carried for water runoff. I'm just saying, something like Roberts Cove Road, that's not going to be a one-year fix, that's probably going to be a two-to-three-year fix, and I think that's what they did the last time, 20 years ago, when we did it. So, but the problem is, is when the town comes up this much, this is approved, the select will have to look at Hayes Road, because last year, townspeople said to pave it. We never did do anything with it, because we didn't have enough money to do it, so...
Well, four years ago, they brought in the Lee Pond Road. That was under petition.
Well, that I don't remember.
And we've never done that neither.
I don't remember that.
Can I?
Yes.
So just to offer maybe a different perspective, not all of the roads would need to be outsourced.
Right.
So if we're looking to augment, perhaps a more cost-efficient way to augment, what's happening is to bring someone to come in to do the maintenance and the dredging and all of that, and allow us to get more miles for our paving and our road reconstruction. I think that our money stretches further when our guys do it, and they have done a good job. So rather than take the expensive portion and outsource it, why not bring in people to do maintenance?
Very well possible.
And presumably, those people would be, you know, less capitalized, therefore their overhead would be less, therefore, again, in theory...
There you go, we get more bang for the buck.
But I guess the thing that comes to mind is, if the numbers that you're talking about, that you learned from Wolfboro Road, one mile versus three, and, you know, I'm rounding, you know, end of the day, half the round, but three to one.
At least. Some years, they get four miles.
Okay, so I still look at that and I think, you know, oh my gosh, okay, for us to negate that math, okay, and look to save, you know, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, okay, to then, a few years later, lose that return on our investment, that is really, you know, concerningly short-sighted, you know, and, you know, might be one of those things where we're best to bite the bullet, spend the money, capitalize on that return on our investment, three to one, four to one, whatever, you know what I mean? So, just thought.
No, Sydney, just go back to your conversation, I understand what you're saying there. The only thing is, though, the highway department's budget is also used in conjunction with the road reconstruction budget, so it's not really just the 950 we spend. We spend more than that in road reconstruction, because all the fuel costs come out of the highway department's budget for this. Different things come out of it, the salaries come out of it for the road reconstruction. So the road reconstruction is primarily to grind the roads, put catch basins in, culverts in, bring gravel in, then have the contractor come in and do the hot top, which is the most expensive part of the job. So I'm not saying that the folks didn't do a good job, don't take me wrong there. All I'm saying is, when we take them and put them on road reconstruction, we lose on the other end of maintenance, so we can't, so maybe you've got to come and find a year when we say, all right, we do a couple of short roads this year, so we can get our maintenance done that second year or third year. But the last few years...
Contracted on the project.
We just, the last few years, we haven't done much maintenance, one, the folks are shorthanded, most of the crews are on the road reconstruction. I think last year up on the mountain, you guys were right there till snowflied, and it made it tough on you guys.
But they also, now they've got a full crew, they can split the crew again like they did back when we first started these projects.
Well, let's hope it does. I have no problem with the article as written.
That's what they did back when we first started this, they had their maintenance going and they had their road crew going. And that may be.
Any more questions, some more to some? Any more from the Budget Committee? Mr. Holt?
I have to agree with you, the Highway Department does a pretty good job rebuilding the roads, reconstructing them, considering the manpower you have, but you're not maintaining your roads. So you take away from one entity, you save here, you lose over here. How does it balance, I don't know. But the figure's been thrown out, $1 million per mile. What does that include compared to what we do? You can play this game throwing figures out. And what we do is, when I, when you ask for a cost of what it costs to do the roads in this 1 million, basically, what your chairman just said, it's material. It doesn't include labor, doesn't include truck rentals, to the best of my knowledge, it doesn't include fuel. This, this all starts adding up. If you want to go in, keep going in the road reconstruction program, I suggest that we address the issue of manpower, so you can still do your road maintenance. I also would like to have a plan. We have no plan. Every year, we throw out a million dollars. What are you going to do with it next year? I don't believe anybody can tell me tonight.
We haven't done roads yet.
We always have a plan. We always have a plan, but we don't make that plan until we know that the money is available.
You don't have a road plan unless people can see it. I'm sorry.
We have a road plan.
Where is it?
And we have held public hearings on that road plan.
Every road we do, we have a public hearing.
And we have had an order of roads in which...
Tonight, we approved...
I'm answering your question.
Tonight...
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, Matt. She's trying to answer a question.
Excuse me.
We, we have a list of roads in order of priority that we go through, and then if something else happens, such as when we needed to go up and do, I think it was Marsha Drive? We had to go up and do?
Barbara Drive.
Barbara Drive.
That was her sister.
Marsha's sister, thank you. And that list of roads that we came up with, that took us through several years, we had a public hearing about those roads that was held over at the Alton Historical Society. So we do put a plan in place, and we follow it through the years unless there is an event that causes us to bring a different road in towards the top. So yes, we do, we don't just throw darts at which roads we're going to reconstruct. There's a plan.
Well, let me just ask, let me explain. I'll be quick, this probably isn't the place, but I went to get this plan, all I wanted to do was look at it. I went to your administration, told there was nothing here in this building. I went to the public, I was, I was suggested to go to the Highway Department, I went to the Highway Garage. Kenny was not there, he was out on the road. I asked the secretary about it and so forth, she didn't know anything about a road program. So I, she said she'd get back to me, or they'd get back to me. They did with a phone call, said there is a old plan. Alls I wanted to do was see it, I still haven't seen it, but it's outdated, and it's, a new one is under the work, is in the progress, it'll be done in a month, possibly. So I still haven't seen one. And, but tonight, you can't tell me what the million dollars, you can't tell us what the million dollars is going for, other than roads. We know for the fire department's going here, we know it's going for a truck here, but we don't know what the roads are.
All I can tell you, Bob, is last year, there was a conversation of a couple of different roads, which was Roberts Cove Road, the folks had come in. School Street was mentioned over two years ago, Church Street was mentioned over two years ago, and I also know Tom's Road took an awful beating last year during the spring storms, that's just off of Roberts Cove Road. So those are, and Hayes Road there, those are one, two, three, four, five roads that the town will have to look at this year. At the Highway Agent, we'll have to come back to the Board of Selectmen and discuss with them what roads he feels are the most prioritized. As far as coming in tonight with what roads are going to be done, no, we can't, none of us can tell you that here. And after this one, who knows? Some might have to be kicked down the road, and some others might have to be done.
I'm not arguing that your roads don't need, you do need to spend money on your roads. We do need to spend that million bucks.
But it is time, I think, for the Selectmen to come up and revisit a five-year road plan or a 10-year road plan again like they did 15 years ago.
Absolutely.
I think it's been a while since it's been revised. I haven't seen one in three years.
See, if you do that, Mr. Chairman, I believe, and it can help the board sell it to the people, and it got voted down last year. And it's not that, you do have to put this money away for your roads, there's no arguing this, I, I don't take that away from you. I'd just like to see a plan. So when people come in with Roberts Cove Road, for example, you can, if you've got a list, a 10-year program, you can have it on it, saying, we, we realize that road does need work, it's prioritized, it's be next year, it'll be three years down the road.
I ask you also what the balance is left in that account right now, please.
This money is also used in case heavy spring thaws come out like last year, washouts during summertime during thunderstorms, so it's not just used just primarily on those roads either.
And I just wanted to mention real quick, just on this topic, again, from a planning perspective, we have 80-some-odd miles a road in town with an estimated 20-year lifespan. That gives us four miles of road a year. The Highway Department's completing three to four miles of road a year, we're right where we need to be.
We'll never get the gravel roads done. When this plan first came out, it was said that the gravel roads would be taken care of. The gravel roads is no way it'll ever be done.
Yeah, you've got a lot of gravel roads.
So as of November 27th, 2019, the balance was 553,436.50. Now keeping in mind, all of these balances that I'm giving to you are not necessarily what, what they currently are now, because in December, there's a, there are a lot of transactions that occur with the trustees of the trust funds. Money goes in, expenses come out to reimburse the general fund, and so on and so forth. So this is just a rough...
Shouldn't be too much out of this, though, where we didn't do anything last year. Shouldn't be too much out of this, though, where we didn't do anything last year.
Right.
So, potentially, you'd have about 1.5 million in that reserve this year. If I did my numbers right.
If H is approved as written.
If it's approved as written, yes. David, there won't be any questions right now for the public. There's, there'd be no questions right now with the public, it'd be at the end of the warrant article, David.
Make a motion to approve Article H as presented.
Second.
Motion is made to approve Article H as presented.
Good, just a question. Second by, who seconded that?
Phil.
Phil.
Motion made, second and defer the discussion.
Yeah, just a question on the way it's worded. The, so the, the 950, okay, is the gross amount, okay, and then, I'm then puzzled by the next sentence, this is just phraseology, said amount is partially offset by revenues from the Highway Block Grant, blah, blah, blah. So, is it 950 plus 201,000? Or is it 950 minus 201,000?
950 minus 201,000.
Okay, then, okay, in which case, I would suggest changing the word-
We can't change it.
Okay.
Because we have to put that 200,000, by putting that warrant article where it's written, that allows us to take that 201,000, put it in the construction fund.
I think my suggestion on the grammatic is a point of clarity.
It's always been that way, David, for over 20 years, but that's the way we had to write it according to the RA. Wants it written.
I think when you say is, okay, that leads me to believe it's 950 plus 201. If you change the is to was, okay, meaning the, you know, the amount is then reduced by the 201,000.
I can't quite agree with you on that, myself.
No, we're appropriating 950. 950. If you get the 201, that's an estimate, that's extra, that's extra.
Right. Yep.
It's gross budgeting.
But the 9, the 950, in theory, would be a warrant article that the voters will have to approve, and then would come from tax funds.
Yes.
Right?
And then it'd be offset by the 201,000, if we get the 201,000 from the-
So, assuming that you get the 201, okay, then instead of collecting 950 from the taxpayer, you're getting 750.
No, you're still going to collect the 950, it's gross budgeting.
Okay, then where does, okay, when the 201 comes in, again, rounding 200, okay?
It's added to it?
It's not added to it, it goes to the fund, it goes to the general fund, which will offset- Yep. That 950, they act down to 749.
It shows on your revenue report.
Shows on the revenue reports, on the two folks get every month.
Okay, yeah, you know, I, I would find it helpful just to have that clarified, that's all.
But actually, we're appropriating 950.
950.
And when that 200 comes in, that goes into another area, it doesn't, it's not subtracted from the 950.
Right, but it says here that we're going to, we're going to raise 950, okay? And we're, it's, that's why we're raising something less than 950, to the extent that we're getting money back, that is a 950.
We, we are raising 950, because it's gross budgeting. If we receive the 201,000, that goes into the, the fund balance.
Right, because it's a surplus.
Right, which we then have the potential and the opportunity to use to decrease the fund, or the tax rate. We can put it against, for the tax rate, but there's no guarantee that we will receive it, and no guarantee that we would use it to lower the tax-
Not a problem. In which case, my suggestion would be change the word is to will be. That's all, only just a point of clarity. And then the only other suggestion I had was, is, as we're identifying various roads that require work, okay, and, yeah, I get it, you know, tough winters, what we thought we were going to do because of the winter now becomes, you know, a little different priority, you know, does it constitute, you know, recognizing two separate budgets, one for road reconstruction, and one for road repair? Don't know that we have an answer tonight, just kind of throwing that out there as food for thought.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Article I, Highway Sand Shed Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town vote and raise appropriate sum of $10,000, be added to the Highway Sand Shed Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 2003, recommended by the Board of Selectmen, so forth, so on. This is, I guess, one of my thorns. I, I really think if the town's serious about putting up a sand shed protecting Mill Pond, if this town sheds are going to stay there, they ought to stop putting away a little more than $10,000 a year, because I think right now, there's about 60,000 in there, if this gets approved.
Right now, there's, well, as of the end of November, 50,449.97 cents.
So, if this gets approved, we go 60,000. I think the last time we saw a sand shed was right around the neighborhood of about 350 to 400,000 dollars, is what the Durham spent, if not more than that. But this is one of the things, the state came in and said the town must do. So, we've been throwing 10,000, I think those couple of years, we didn't throw anything at it, now we're back throwing 10,000. I think in the future-
And that's for years.
I think in the future, next year, the Selectmen really need to sit back and look. Where cyanobacteria's taken off so much, and we need to protect the ponds we have now to clean them up before it gets further into the lake, this would be one thing the town should be looking at. But I think further down the road, the town needs to start looking at two different things, a safety building, and a highway building, because the highway building, they're outgrowing fast, and even though we just put on addition, plus they're outgrowing the area they have down there. I mean, we got gravel and sand now across the street, where they used, where they used to put the winter sand on Mills Pond side, but their lot is getting tiny, and the last time it got that tiny, when the Highway Department started growing, there was a very serious accident down there years ago, because they were so cramped for space, but I think it's something the town needs to start looking for and planning for in the future. For the Highway Department and fires, fire safety. But, that's my opinion, I do agree with this, but I think we need to start looking at more serious.
This, this topic came up in CIP kind of repetitively about buildings and, and departments, and, and how they're outgrowing them. And, and one of the biggest things that we needed to fall back on was a master plan. It's like, where, where are we going? Because it's really hard for each department to kind of try and say, I want to put away $100,000 for a building. Well, what building? Well, we don't know yet, because we don't know where we're going to be. So, I definitely think that five-year picture, for even the subcommittees and stuff, to be able to look at, because right now, there's no plan for some multimillion-dollar buildings that need to happen in the near future.
And, to, to, you know, dovetail that, you know, my thought, my thought would be, is, if we are thinking in that direction, you know, I guess, I would want us to visit the plural of building versus buildings, okay? And rather than potentially see various capital improvement, separate projects, okay? Perhaps there's economies of the scale that can be established by having a municipal center, that would house multiple disciplines, okay? So-
There was a lot of talk on that.
Questions on Article I? I have a motion to approve Article I as written.
So moved.
Second made, and seconded, to approve Article I as, as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just a quick question on that, but, does the sand really have silica dust in it?
Also has phosphorus.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons the state's trying to get away from using sand during the wintertime, they, as you notice on state roads, they're using more salt now than sand. Unless it's addressed to ice storm for hills, they'll use the sand. But the state, and, everybody has come back that the sands have phosphorus levels in it, which go, run off and go into the ponds, which help create the cyanobacteria, helps feed it.
Okay, again, just a suggestion on that, most of, most of our corporate insurance policies have silica exclusions on them. Okay? So, we find that to be quite common, that might be something that would be easily overlooked in a large portfolio, and just FYI, that might be something you want to look into.
Article J, Bridge Construction Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town vote and raise appropriate sum of $10,000, be added to the Bridge Construction Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 1995. This is another one, we've been putting money in, show the state in good faith, so when we do need bridge repair, we can go to them and have them pay for most of it. Something that is needed, especially where we just got listed another bridge or a-
Culvert, actually, in Route 11D.
Which the state put in in 1971, I believe, that culvert was put in when they were building the road, 68, 69, 70, 71. So, I, all I can imagine, if that one's that bad, the one that goes underneath Route 11 must be somewhere near in the same amount of vicinity, so. Any questions on this discussion? Anything from the Budget Committee? Mr. Holt?
Does the state have any town-owned bridges that are red-listed?
Does the state have any, or is, did the state red-label any of our bridges?
Yeah.
Yes, they just did on Route 11D.
Just did 11D.
Yeah, but are we responsible for that?
For the one on 11D, we are responsible, yes.
Oh, 11D, excuse me, oh, okay, all right.
On the, on state roads, one of our bridges listed right now is the one in the bay, but that's the one they're engineering. There was another one that was a culvert up in West Alton that they just fixed this past year, was a old rock culvert that went across, and they put a box, box in, box culvert in on that one this year.
Of course, we don't have to-
We don't pay anything, this is only for town roads, and town bridges, and this way here, when we need it, we can go to the state and ask them for help with our bridges when they come to, as long as we have money there.
But now, what's the timeframe on that one on 11D, for example?
They, they said it's still past, if you go over and go back, they're just saying-
It's not even weight limited yet.
So, it hasn't weight limited it yet, they're just saying there is knowledge of deterioration in the metal culvert. Thank you. Any other discussion? A motion to approve Article J as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Which been made by Paula Rochelle, second by Sidney Chapley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Highway Building Improvement Repairs and Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $20,000, be added to the Highway Building Improvement Repair Capital Reserve Fund.
How much is in this fund, Liz?
As of the end of November, 381,347 and 19 cents.
Any other discussion, questions?
Motion to approve Article K is submitted.
So, can I hold you just a second?
I'm sorry, I read the wrong, um, thank you, Laura, I read the wrong account. 56,487.
How much?
56,487.
That looks better.
487.
It's a little different. Say we got enough to almost do a town build.
Yeah, which account did you read? So we know where to take it from, get it from.
Fire Department.
That was Selectmen salary line, I think they read.
Any other questions? Concerns on this? Motion, Sidney, you decided to make a motion?
Yep, motion to approve Article K is submitted.
Second. Motion made by Sidney Chapley to approve Article K, seconded by Paula Rochelle. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Highway Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $10,000, be added to the Highway Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 2007.
Now, which sidewalk fund is this for? The bay or the town?
This is for the town, because if it's in the bay, it'd have to, I think the bay is listed as the bay sidewalk.
39,348.51 cents. There's another, there are several accounts, and the trustees of the trust funds are working to consolidate them all, because some of these may have been separated in error. So, that's one, another one is 19,684 and 2 cents.
How much was the first one again, Liz, I'm sorry?
39,348.
That's not the bay one, right?
Still with other accounts. There's another one that has 1,164.54 cents. There's another one that is 481 dollars and 3 cents. I think that's it. Yep.
Now, part of this money would probably be used next year, because we were establishing a sidewalk from the town beach all the way around the corner, just in front of the fishing game, if I remember, so some of that money would have to be used out of that.
Yep.
Whatever's left for the concrete, if I'm not mistaken there.
How many linear feet do we get? What is, do you have any idea?
You know what the cost for a linear foot is, Matt, I'm sure, possibly you don't.
Just from an outside perspective looking in, this is probably one of those areas you could subcontract versus having them do it with such large equipment.
Actually, we, we, most of the time, we do, usually they go down, they prep it sometimes, and then the concrete guys come back in, put their granite curving in. We just happened to do the one up at the Fishing Game, Downing's Landing there, only because there was only so much time and money available, that they thought, we thought they were going to start working on it a lot quicker, so they couldn't get the contracts, and those guys did it themselves. So, next year, it's ready to go, and just be, um, concrete put in, if I'm not mistaken, right, Matt?
Motion to approve Article L is presented.
Second. Motion made by Sidney, and seconded by Phil, for Article L as presented. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The trustees are going to come back with the recommendation to clarify some of these, for us next year.
Hopefully, next year, I mean, at some point, there are a couple of, they're housekeeping items, but one, where one would be the sidewalks, another one would be the town beach accounts, and it takes a long time to get those fixed, because financial investment companies are involved, and there's a whole process to it, so.
Article M, Alton Bay Community Center Property Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to establish an Alton Bay Community Center Property Capital Reserve Fund under provision RSA 35:1, for the purpose of repairs and upgrades to the Alton Bay Community Center and property, and to raise appropriate sum of $10,000, be placed in said fund. Furthermore, to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. This would be a new fund, which I think is needed.
Definitely.
Because the roof will have to be done in a few years, some of the deckboards will have to be done, the railing.
Railings.
Thinking on one side, there's been a little movement on one of the piers underneath the deck, that's shown, so.
It's a long overdue.
Well, this is the train station.
Yes, yes. Questions, concerns?
High time we do.
I have a motion to approve Article M as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Phil, seconded by Sidney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just a suggestion on that, I think that that's a, a nice component to, to the bay, and we may be doing ourselves a disservice if we underestimate the amount of money that may be required to really restore that, as opposed to maintain it.
Correct.
So, just a thought, you know?
Article N, Mill Foil Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $23,000, be added to the Mill Foil Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 2010. This is a regular article every year, which you also get matching money from the state of New Hampshire on this, if I'm not mistaken. Any questions? It's currently in the fund. I think there's a little left on this year.
43,166 and 50 cents.
Would you be subject to matching?
Yeah, there is some sort of a match involved in that.
From the state, yes. They didn't do, have to do as much in the river, I believe, this year, maybe Kelly could come up, and, or somebody from the Mill Foil Committee is also here, I don't know if I see him or not. Yes. Remember, in the minutes in their meetings and stuff, I remember seeing, they didn't have to do some of the testing.
This past year, we didn't do any herbicide treatments, which are the expensive ones, because the, the lake was colder through May and June, and we had done them the previous year, but the anticipation is, we'll probably have to start those up again this next year, along with the dash work that we did in the river and around arenas.
The dash work?
That's the-
Any other questions, concerns? I have a motion to approve Article N as, as written.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Phil to approve Article M as written, seconded by Virgil. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Landfill Closure Capital Reserve Fund. See if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of $5,000, be added to the Landfill Closure Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in 1994. These funds are being used to deal with contamination at the landfill to meet state regulatory
Do you know the amount that's in there now for that, Liz?
Yes, 44,193.30 cents.
The engineer was in, talked to us, what, a month ago?
Yes.
About the, what we'll need in the upcoming year?
Yeah, he said we shouldn't need none of the wells, but-
It's testing, though.
And this number is, and this number is down from previous years, too.
It used to be ten.
Way down.
Tremendous.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve Article O, landfill closure capital reserve fund as written.
So moved.
I'll second it. Paul made a motion, I second it, approve Article O, landfill closure capital reserve fund as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Solar array lease agreement, see if the town will authorize the selectmen into a twenty-five year lease agreement with New England Solar Garden for the purpose allowing the construction operation of a solar panel array on top of the town's capped landfill located sixty-one Herd Hill Road, map fifteen lot eighty-seven, and further negotiate the terms and conditions of said lease. The article does not involve any taxation, there will be no impact on the tax rate. So Article P is open for discussion. This is really more of a Selectman's article than Budget Committee because some monies are involved in this appropriations. My only concern with this is we're going with the first company that walked through the door. I don't think we should have, I don't feel the article should mention a company themselves because the new board might come in and say, I'd like to entertain an idea from these two other companies. See what, I think the article should read, see if the Selectman can enter into an agreement with a solar company that best fits the needs of the town of Alton. I don't know if that's too loosely written, Liz, or not. I don't think we should be just jumping out at that first one that came in, that would be my only concern.
Yeah, I don't think we should put a timeframe on the lease or a name, but what we're saying is we agree and we're asking the townspeople to approve us entering into an agreement with a solar company to create a solar garden.
And that's what I would say a lot, but it would, it was a lot better to word that.
A lot of people thought we had already made our mind up and I said, no, that wasn't in come out of our meeting that way. I took it that, to ask the townspeople if we could at least have permission to lease the land.
My other question is, what happens after twenty-five years? Who's responsible? We either re-lease it or we become responsible for maintenance and repair and taking care.
Oh, they come and clean it up. Said when they came.
Not after twenty-five years.
He said at twenty-five years, if we don't re-lease the land, they come and take all the product out, clean it back up, put it back the way it was.
It's their, it's their stuff.
All the stuff.
Okay.
If you re-lease it, then they update it.
That would have to be written in the lease.
That would have to be written, yeah.
Any continues.
That would definitely have to be written in the lease. Because what if they, what if they go belly up? What if the company all of a sudden goes bankrupt?
Then we own the equipment.
We own the equipment and we maintain it. That's all I'm asking, you know, just a little protection there.
Well, I just, I've been, you know, I know we've gotten some letters from some folks here in town about the toxins and stuff, they felt. But I did a little more investigating and looking in the Massachusetts and different areas that have more solar fields and farms than what we have. And some of the promises just haven't been there from the revenue end. And looking at homeowners' virtues of it, they start taking it, but then they're not seeing the savings in the long run. So I got a lot more investigating before I would say, yes, go ahead and, you know, do this, but I don't think we should mention a company at this point.
No, I agree.
Because you could have a company come in next month and say, I'll give you more money. Or whatever, but it's, and it's not always about how big the dollar is, it's who's going to give us the best benefit for the tax.
Right. Correct.
Sue. So I have it rewritten, if you want.
I, I believe in a multi-year lease agreement that goes onto a warrant article, you have to have the number of years on there for DRA.
When the Selectman in nineteen ninety asked the townspeople for approval to allow the businesses in the Bay to use the land, to lease the land in the Bay for the purpose of sewerage and stuff like that, we didn't have to do a multi-year lease. We just, we were, the townspeople gave us that permission to let the businesses in the Bay to use the land, town land for the purpose of septic.
How many years ago was that?
Nineteen ninety, I believe, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two in that timeframe. That's when I was first a Selectman.
So it's been my experience with the DRA, like other warrant articles that you have done, lease of a fire truck or whatever, you have to have, you have to have a certain number of years. I mean, you can pick something now and negotiate with a company, twenty-five years, twenty years, you know. So it means, at least if you put something in there.
Right, but we don't, do not have to name a company. What do we say, up to twenty-five years?
No, I don't think you have to name a company, but if you remember November fourth meeting, the motion was made to support consideration of a warrant article for New England Solar Garden to be placed on this year's ballot.
That's not the way I remember the motion, I wish I had straightened that out in the minutes because that's not really my, was my intention. My intention was to go out and.
I just wanted to.
No, I'm glad, no, I'm glad you did it.
Well, we can still use them, but there should probably be an RFP process.
Have a rewrite this and we'll vote on it again.
Sidney has a new, new, new article for Article P.
To see if the town will authorize the Selectmen to enter into a lease agreement with a company for the purpose of creating a solar garden on top of the town's capped landfill located at sixty-one Herd Hill Road.
Do you want to put a, up to a twenty-five year lease?
Sure. Into a maximum twenty-five year lease.
Can you tomorrow maybe forward me that, I couldn't, can't write that best.
Why not?
Get it, Mary? To see if the town will authorize the Selectmen to enter into a maximum twenty-five year lease.
Yep.
For the purpose of allowing the construction and operation of a solar.
Company.
Garden.
Garden.
I think she used.
Panel, panel array.
Panel.
Panel array.
Garden of panel array.
There are six and one half dozen of them.
Panel array on top of the town's capped landfill located sixty-one Herd Hill Road, map fifteen lot eighty-seven, and further to negotiate terms and conditions of said lease. Is that correct?
Correct.
Did you get that?
Uh, most of it.
Did you get, Mary? I'll read it back just in case.
Take a sick shot, hand.
You'd like me to.
Should we still do that?
See if the town will authorize the Selectmen to enter into a maximum twenty-five year lease agreement with a company for the purpose of allowing the construction and operation of a solar panel array on top of the town's capped landfill, et cetera, et cetera. Red is, as it is.
Satisfaction?
Yep.
Motion made by Sidney, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul Rochelle. Discussion. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Master plan consultant, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of twenty-five thousand for the purpose of hiring a master plan consultant that specializes in municipal master plan guidance and to work with the planning board and staff to assist and address the master plan needs and to process, process the town of Alton. Special warrant article will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two colon seven and will not lapse until the master plan consulting services are completed or by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, whichever is sooner. Just talked about this, especially with town building and stuff, it's something that needs to be updated.
We talked, we talked about it at planning board, too, and it's something that's got to get started so we know, so we have a direction of what we're going with, with the master plan and commercial land and. Thought by getting a consultant in. Board, everybody thought that it would help get this thing started in the right direction and get it set up.
When was the last time you updated the master plan?
Wasn't that long ago?
Let's see.
How long ago?
Nineteen ninety.
Ninety, no.
No.
It was, it was.
Eight thousand, somewhere in there? No, it was ninety-eight, two thousand, somewhere in there?
I thought it had been sooner than that.
Prior to two thousand.
You have any questions, concerns, you want to bring anybody up from the planning board? No one sitting here.
We just did theirs. And they had, I guess, a massive amount of people. People that, people went up that were CIP and stuff. They used their town planner, happened to be one of the ones that helped set it up. So we've had, Stacy talking to him up there, trying to give us a leeway on how much to even get forward, to get this started, to get the master.
I think it's a good idea because I think the town has been a little behind in some.
Yes. And it's happened since two thousand. Like the CIP and everybody else don't know what direction they're going in. And it'd be nice to have the master plan updated so we know what direction to put everybody in.
No, it seems to have somebody spearhead the operation, get it started, so.
Well, that's the idea. Somebody that knows what they're doing.
Get it started, organized, get everybody rolling. And have a master plan that everybody can work with. I think it's a good idea.
Wonder if Roger has anything to add. Mr. Sample, would you like to come up as chairman of the planning board and say anything?
Yeah, we, we think it's a great idea, especially because the, the last master plan that we had, it didn't really seem as though it suited the town that well. So the idea behind getting, you know, a consultant is just to give us somebody to work with so we can, we can go through the process, because we, we don't know the process.
Right.
So, you know, so we can, we can, we can do it and get it done right. Because I guess one of the things that the town does need is some new zoning and some changes in that regard, so. That would be the master plan that would, you know, get that on its, on its, on its way.
I've been on the CIP committee for three years now, and each year we talk about the master plan and not having one. Most difficult thing is getting started.
Right.
And the real purpose of the consultant is to get the push, to get us off the ground. And I'm not saying twenty-five thousand is sufficient or not, but at least it will get us going.
Give us one way, like a Russian, somebody that knows what they're doing with it.
Correct.
Somebody get it started so everybody can follow through and follow suit and have a process.
We don't have a process.
It makes sense.
Well, and it's, because it's a big project.
Of course.
And it's, gets it started right, so we're not all going in different directions.
It's organized.
Right.
So the last one was two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five?
Yep, Liz just showed me. More.
I've been on the CIP committee for three years, and it has been a really kind of difficult.
Wait, wait, you go state your name first, Peter.
Peter Bowles.
I know who you are, but it needs to be directed.
Peter Bowles, direct.
Well, Bob didn't say his name.
And.
I'm sorry, Bob, did you say your name?
No, I did not. Bob Regan. Thank you. Also a member of the planning board. Two heads.
We've been trying to use, to, our mandate is to use the master plan as a basis of our, making our decisions, as well as the conversations with the department heads and, and the Selectmen and this sort of thing. But we basically have not really had a workable master plan. There's only a couple of chapters in the master plan. There can be as many as five to six to seven different chapters. Now each chapter takes quite a bit of time at determining, there's all sorts of different titles that you can have, to basically look at, at the various aspects of the work of the town. And I think it really is important for us to, we're a mature enough town at this point, to basically say, and we've got a lot of pressure coming in, a lot of new businesses looking to be, to be settled here, a lot of changes, our potential, and we want to maintain what we have that's good, while at the same time being open to new development. And, and becoming an even better town, but not changing to the point that we destroy the stuff that we already have, that we enjoy and reason we live there. So the twenty-five thousand, again, the question always has been, we don't really know whether that's going to be the total cost to do the entire master plan. But we do know around twenty-five thousand, we think we can get somebody come in to, to sit down with our chairman of our boards and this sort of thing, and department heads, to get the thing started. And then the key thing is to get the people of the town on board, to get as many people as possible to join on these different committees, to write these different chapters. That's the thing that's most important, because you don't want this to be a bunch, a small group of people putting this together. We want the whole town to be putting their input in and then it means something, otherwise it doesn't mean something.
Thank you, Peter. I wonder if the town planner has anything, comment to make. Let's go.
I really don't have any additional, I mean, you pretty much nailed it.
I do, thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? The motion to approve Article Q as written.
Second.
Motion made by myself, second by Virgil, to approve Article Q as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Town hall building improvements capital.
Are we able to comment on that from the Budget Committee perspective?
That's why I asked you for questions.
Okay, I thought you were asking the Selectmen.
I'm moving on to my next article though, Dave, now. Article R, Town Hall Building Improvements Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of fourteen thousand dollars be added to the Town Hall Building Improvement Capital Reserve Fund as previously established in two thousand and eleven. And as you remember, this was all started due to fire suppression upstairs here to meet the requirements of the fire department, or New Hampshire Fire Marshal, excuse me, it wasn't just the fire department. So we've been putting fourteen thousand dollars away, I think the price tag on this was right around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
What's nineteen thousand, two twenty and twenty-three cents?
Plus we can always go to the trustees' trust funds and ask, we can use the Clough Moral Trust Fund for that, improvements to town building, correct?
Yes.
Which that has quite a bit of interest in it right now, if I remember right. On what day, say, Sarah told us that, I don't know.
Next page.
No, it's not more than twenty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, this is it, so that. Eight sixty-three.
Eight hundred and sixty-three, is that the principal and interest or just the interest?
I think it's both.
So eight sixty-three.
Yep, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, one thirty-nine, eighty-one cents.
That's what's in the Clough Moral Trust Fund and then that fund, all we can use is the interest, not the principal. So Dave Stacey, the trustees' trust funds would have to tell us what's available. Do I have a motion to approve, any questions on Article R? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Article R, Town Hall Building Improvements Capital Reserve Fund as written?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Sidney, second by Virgil, to approve Article R as written. Any further question, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Hall, second floor lift, Article S, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the first floor lift which provides access to the second floor. The special warrant article will be non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two colon seven, will not lapse until the lift replacement is completed on or by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, whichever is sooner. The sum is to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation.
Boy, we're going right into that unassigned fund balance up this year, aren't we?
Well, you know, I did that on purpose because you guys went and took an extra hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars out there to use to lower the tax rate.
And it should be to lower the tax rate, not to buy everything.
But we did lower it.
Instead of putting people's money in a bank account, we ought to give it back to them.
That's true, and I agree with you, but we were lowering it by over a dollar as it was, and this, here, that other money, you could have been using to offset the taxation by using an undesigned fund balance, but now you're going to use more.
We've never used it out of the fund balances on these.
No, I think you got three articles.
With six and one half a dozen of another, you're either going to raise the taxes to pay for this, or you can use it out of the.
Have we?
Fund balance. What?
Gone to the Clough Moral Fund for this, for this lift? Have we asked at all?
I have not, because I don't believe there's enough money in there for that.
If there's eight hundred and sixty-three thousand.
You can't use the principal.
Hundred and thirty-nine, there's got to be a fifty thousand dollars worth of interest in there, or he better learn how to invest, one or the other. I mean, they're paying almost over twenty percent this year, which gives you over the fifty thousand.
Is this the only company that we talked to? The company that installed this one that says that they can't repair it or they don't have parts for it anymore?
This, I didn't, I didn't bring the file with me tonight. Several companies were contacted. This one came out, gave an estimate, which was brought to the board a year or two before you were sitting on here. A couple of other companies did not respond.
I just, well, this one's outdated.
It, it is, it's beyond, it's, as soon as it breaks down, you will no longer be able to hold meetings on the second floor because you will be in violation of ADA.
But I just think that we should be asking the Clough Moral Trust Fund, because that's a repair, a needed repair for ADA at the town hall.
It sounds, fifty thousand dollars for that just sounds like out of control.
Oh, I, I don't think so.
No, I, I don't either, only because of, no, only because of the four step that I had to buy last year.
They're expensive.
Two years ago. It was almost five thousand dollars just to go up four steps.
They're expensive.
And then once you're done using it, it's not good for anybody else.
Right.
So, and this, this one, we've gotten our year's life out of. I, I, I agree with you that if the Clough Moral Trust Fund can use it, but also remember now, we got bricks and pointing and clarification you had brought up earlier in the year. It just only goes so far.
This year we've already spent.
I don't see much of that in here.
We've already spent a little under twenty-eight hundred this year out of the interest in that fund. I mean, we try to use it when we can, not to use it all up, you never know what's going to happen and we, with an emergency or something.
I think the last time the biggest part was used was for the windows, but. And the roof, I believe.
Roof repair, yeah.
I think that ate up into a lot of it and then.
Then you've got to let it rebuild.
But I can't remember how much Dave Stacey told me was actually in there. That was, that could be used, there is some money in there that can be used, yes.
Yeah, I just think that that's something that, that fund should be used for.
Well, do you want to amend this to say if the money can be used out of the Clough Moral, rewrite that article and if it can be used out of the Clough Moral Trust Fund, do it? Or leave it as is and use on, out of the undesigned fund balance?
I'd rather use it at Clough Moral.
Make the motion.
Rewrite the motion, rewrite the article.
Make a motion to change it, come out of the Clough Moral, as opposed to, see if you get anything.
Town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of fifty thousand dollars to be used from the Clough Moral Trust Fund for the stair lift at the town hall.
Doesn't need to go on the ballot for use out of the Clough Moral Trust Fund.
May I make a suggestion?
Might as well vote this one down to get it off ballot.
What, why don't you make a motion to approve this as written, but contingent upon me finding out from the chairman of the trustees of the trust funds if there is fifty thousand dollars in interest available? There may, there, I don't think there is.
Or we could put it to a vote as written and see if it passes.
It's, yeah.
Let the people decide. Make a motion.
Ultimately, it goes back to the people.
Well, I was talking about us five, whether or not we wanted to approve it and then the Budget Committee will vote to see if they want to approve it and.
I think, I think if the money could come out of the Clough Moral Trust Fund, if there is enough without hurting that balance, to use it, if not, then it should come out of this.
Just keep in mind, this cash cow bull market that we've been in is going to end.
Once and for all later, what goes up always has to come down.
Well, and yes, principal and interest income is separated, but. I don't know that you want to draw down that Clough Moral Fund for a known expense versus an unanticipated expense. There are some, really what it's there for, coming forward.
Leave it as is.
Yeah.
That was put in for repairs at the town hall.
Right, unanticipated.
Motion has been.
Not unanticipated, the way it's written.
A motion has been made, do I have a second to Virgil's motion?
Wait, Virgil move to not?
To have the money taken out of the Clough Moral Trust Fund, that was his motion, I believe that's what you stated, right?
Well, that would just be, in essence, voting this down.
Yeah.
So a positive motion would be to move the article as written and then we would vote it down. Because we don't need to.
We don't need it, if you're taking out the Clough Moral, we don't need to take it out, so. You going to take your motion back?
I didn't give a second anyways.
Oh, I didn't ask for a second yet. Article seven, Town Hall, second floor. Does the Budget Committee have any questions?
John.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, just to, just maybe a point of clarification, since this is either coming out of Clough Moral or unassigned fund balance, is this, and it doesn't deal with taxation, is this something the Budget Committee will vote on?
It's true.
Yes. Anything that's money expended.
Any, any.
It's not a money article.
But it's, it's requesting to appropriate fifty thousand dollars out of designated fund balance, we're still asking to appropriate that fifty thousand.
I mean, not that I'm against this, I'm just, I just want to make sure.
But that's at the sole discretion of the Selectmen.
Right, it's.
If it's Clough Moral, yeah.
Not Clough Moral, even the designated fund balance, doesn't need to have appropriation from the townspeople, because the money's already there.
Doesn't. Yes. Yeah. We do it every year. We do? Oh, no, we do, we can do it to offset the tax rate, but not to put it towards something.
Something physical.
Yeah, right, got it.
Any other discussion, any other questions on the Budget Committee?
Yes, on the fifty thousand.
Yes, on the 50,000, what, what determined that number?
The company that the, the town administrator had come in and looked at repairing this or replacing it. There was no parks or anything that can be replaced. Now, if it goes down, it's none.
So it's essentially a reasonably bona fide number?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was from a year ago, though.
And then the only, the only other thing, and I think Virgil, you kinda hit the nail on the head, you know, project for another day, you know, maybe somebody should be looking at the return on that investment and is that appropriate for the, you know, for the current market? Hate to be thinking we're getting 2% or 3%.
We're not.
No, no, they do a great job of testing.
All I'm saying is, you know, somebody should be looking at it and making it accountable. That's all.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for Articles S as written. I'll move, I'll move Article S as written.
Second.
Article S is moved by Ruben White, one second by Sidney, as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Article T, IT Internet Technology Capital Reserves Fund, to see if the town will establish an IT Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA 35:1 for the purpose of funding larger scale IT needs and projects. This would include system upgrades, new hardware equipment, service computers and network software, GIS security systems, audio video system and emergencies. Further to raise and appropriate 6,346,000 be placed in said fund. Further to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend that. Questions, concerns from the Board of Selectmen? Because we talked about this earlier in the year, we all knew what it was about, that we didn't have these hot hits every two years, this would help offset those. Budget Committee, any concerns or questions? As we talked about this at your meetings too, I think it was more your guys' idea to put this into play than it was ours.
And CIP as well.
Is there a reason why the 6346, we just didn't say 7,000, just to round it out?
As far as I know, this is what came from the IT coordinator.
Right, but it's a capital reserve fund, so it's something that's gonna continue on.
Just saying, this is, this is the first time we're seeing this justice much, you I can ask Josh if he's here.
He was here, but he's, he's...
He's not here.
Josh is no longer here, so I can't answer that for you.
I might be able to shed a little light on that because Josh was one of the guys that was on my list to meet with in advance of him preparing the budget. This number is a little bit less than what was originally proposed, okay? So, you know...
I'm just saying all the articles are rounded out and this one's not, just seems kind of weird.
Understood, and my guess is it's an IT guy, okay?
That's it, right there.
And the other thing was, when this, the first amount was for the, had the server in it, this one doesn't have the server in it anymore, so that's what reduced it. As we took that from the extra revenue we got from the state for the main server for the Town Hall. And I think that's what was left over when he was looking to put into the reserve.
Yeah, it was simple attraction.
You folks like that number or would you like to round it up to $7,000?
Fine.
Okay. Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Board of Selectmen, do I have a motion to approve Article T as written?
So moved.
Phil made the motion, second by Sidney, to approve Article T as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article U, GIS Geographical Informational System Expense, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $80,000, so purpose installing the first phase of a GIS system utilization by all town departments. This special warrant article will be non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:7 and will not lapse until first phase is completed or by December 31st, 2024, whichever is sooner. The sum is to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation.
I feel like we've been talking about this since I was on Budget Committee.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the current company that we use for our tax maps... I have this at your seat. Um, they are requiring all of their customers to go digital for tax maps. You have to do that through the GIS system. They have given us a two-year notice that as of January 1st, 2022, they will not update our tax maps if we have not gone to a GIS system for it. So we will be in some trouble with current valid tax maps in 2022 if we don't get this started. This 80, this 80,000 dollars is only partial, it's only part of it. The GIS system is several hundred thousand dollars, but at least this is the first step based on one estimate that he received from a company to do it. And he's, I apologize that he's not here. He was here, he is not feeling well and, um, so he had to leave.
We, we have been talking about the need to GIS for ever years.
But it will conclude everything for us, water department, fire hydrants, I mean, catch basins, everything. I think Mr. Rogers has been talking to us about the three years I've been sitting here. I know Courtney had done some on her phone through Google, mapping out different where water mains are, shut-off valves and stuff, but it's something that is needed, it's something we're being forced into, unfortunately, in the technology room.
I feel like we're probably the last town.
Yeah, you're not, you're not doing it.
In the, in the region...
Any questions from the Budget Committee? Concerns? Anymore from the Board of Selectmen? The motion approved Article U as presented.
Removed.
Second. Motion been made by Sidney to approve Article U as written, second by Paula Rochelle. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All I can say though is we're hitting that undesigned fund balance pretty hot and heavy.
Well, I think we should take the rest of the articles out of there.
Okay.
So take them out of taxation, take them out of the bank account.
Articles, I, I'm just gonna, gonna look at a couple of the, little good, Article V, Article W, Article X.
Put them all together?
No, I'm not gonna put them all together. It's basically taking capital reserve funds that were made by the Water Commissioners years ago and establishing them to these, the one capital reserve fund. And I don't, it doesn't really have to do appropriating any money, it's basically moving one money to, to take, to start using one capital reserve fund. They have the taxpayers saying we can stop using that and combine it into one. And I'll just read Article V, Alton Water Works Water Transmission Line Extension Capital Reserve, Reserve Fund Discontinuance. This is a discontinue that one because the Alton Water Works has no future plans of extending future water lines out to South Alton or anywhere else. Right now, there's $25,000 plus in any addition accumulated interest to be transferred to the Water Main Expense Capital Reserve Fund. Article W, Alton Water Works Water Transmission Line Replacement Capital Reserve Fund Discontinues. This is a discontinue, the Alton Water Works Transmission Line Replacement Capital Reserve Fund created in 1997. Said funds interest to data withdrawal estimating approximately $30,000. So this money's just sitting there and we're, they wanna, we wanna take it and put it into one capital reserve fund so it can be used for what it's needed for, for the water main. Right now, if anything happened to the water main, there isn't enough money in there to do it, you'd end up having to take it out of your revenue account. Article X, Water Main Expense Capital Reserve Fund, to see if this town will vote to establish a Water Main Capital, Main Expense Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions RSA 35:1 for the purpose of paying for expenses incurred during any creation of a water main or main to stop the install, stop the installation, repair and upgrade, removal, location change and replacement, offset same. Raise appropriate $1 to be placed in this fund. Further, name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend. So that one, we have to create before we can put the money for the discontinuance. And the only reason I read those three together, they kinda go hand in hand, is what we've all talked about, so I didn't know if I had to sit there on each and every one and, I just thought we could approve Article V, Article W and Article X as written.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Sidney to approve Article V, W and X as written, second by Phil. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Water main stand maintenance repair capital reserve fund, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $5,000 be added to the water maintenance bands, maintenance repair capital reserve fund previously established in 2014. Have any discussion, concerns? Can you tell me what's in net reserve account right now? Liz?
Yes. Two thousand, um, eight hundred, thirty-two dollars, seventy-four cents. As of the end of November.
Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the Budget Committee?
Motion to approve Article Y as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve Article Y is submitted by Sidney and second by Phil again. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Z, Bay Dock Work.
Jesus, what are you voting for?
See if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of $8,400, so the purpose of replacing existing dock attached to the restaurant known as Chibley's on the pier to allow the public to dock at the new dock, add one or two bowfingers as space allowed to the new dock area, fix the eroding banking behind the dock and attach this new dock to the public town docks using an extension of the existing boardwalk. Special warrant article will be a non-lapsing appropriation pursuant to RSA 32:7, will not lapse until the repairs or renovation completed or by December 31st, 2024, whichever is sooner. The breakdown of this main project is $30,400. Chibley's portion is $4,500. That would be the responsibility of Chibley's paying for their portion of the part that they lease. Additional finger, if room allows, $10,500. DES permitting cost, $5,000. Product cost for banking, $30,000. Subtotal, $80,400. Chibley portion minus $4,500, I think should be $75,900 to the taxpayers.
It should be, but you have to appropriate the full amount.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. You take away that 4,500 and you still have 80, it doesn't look good.
I know, it looks odd when you look at it, but...
It's all from an accountant's perspective over here. Any questions? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Because I know this thing go before the CIP.
I just have one. I was reading the backup, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And there's a lot of stipulations in the backup, but the public will still be able to use the docks, even if they don't use the rest, the facility at Chibley's. Is that in a lease or is it an agreement or...
There will be a written agreement.
There will be a new written agreement once this is established. The one pier that's standing there right now is falling in and disrepair. We have to do something, one, for the town's liability. Part of the repair is done on part of the dock and the rampway that goes down that Mr. Chibley has to pay for, that's why there's a cost in there for them. We will be able to use that to be a new written agreement with the Chibleys by the pier to have access and everything else. The way it's written right now is kind of confusing whether or not we could actually put open docks down there or not. It's kinda open-ended the way it's been written. The way I read it is we have no right to that other dock down there.
One side.
One side.
One side closest to the, to the Chibley's by the pier, um, their deck, that one side facing that would be the side that they would use. That'd be directly in front of the 10 feet that he would be purchasing. But reading this, that's different. Am I right or wrong? Dock will become town owned.
The new portion.
The new portion. The new portion.
The, the exist...
But yes, but any of their customers could park in there, as though anybody else could park in any of the other finger docks, yes.
Okay.
And be open to the public, yes.
As possible, may not be able to put two added fingers docks, it may be only one. That's a possibility, so that's why it's worded the way it is.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Article Z is presented.
I second.
Motion made by Sidney to approve Article Z as written, second by Paula Rochelle. Discussion. My only concern is, and it needs to be done, that whole wall, all the way down there too needs to be done, and we have to look at it a little bit better. Um, I can't see a whole lot that needs to be done in the village right now, but I've heard in the past, all the money goes to the bay, all the money goes to the bay, but this is an area in the bay, those steps going down to this dock that need to be fixed, need to be replaced, so it's not just a project that came out of thin air. It's a dock that has, it's a platform that has been neglected over the years. Um, I think when we first went down there, the brushers go, growing around the handrail of going down the stairs, which are deteriorated, so it needs to be done. By adding the extra money to it, it would allow for a few more finger docks, which will allow maybe hopefully some more residents a chance to be able to dock on a weekend. So I will vote for this.
If I may?
Yep.
There's gonna be phases put to this down through the years. This being Phase 1 is what was talked about, to do the dock and to do the connection between the two docks, so people would walk through and stabilize that bank, which has been neglected for a very long time, stabilizing the bank. And then possibly after that, talking about doing the handicap ADA accessible ramps and doing the other, any work to the, to the retaining wall, full length of that whole dock area. So it'd be in phases. This being Phase 1.
Any other discussion? Seeing them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All in favor, 5-0?
Okay, I have it.
Yeah, 5-0. Hawaii 5-0, just 5.
Saying that.
Article AA, Old Home Week, to see if the town will vote and raise appropriate sum of $3,000, so the purpose of funding Old Home Week events such as barber shoppers, band concerts, magic shows and other forms of activities recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. Discussion by the Board of Selectmen.
Question? Last year, we didn't appropriate the 2,500 that this year's was appropriated. I think, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Roger, but we lost like $1,900 on the deal this past year. And I think that's maybe, you might wanna come up and speak to it, Roger, too, but I'm thinking that's why you went for 3,000 instead of 2,500, am I correct?
Right, yeah. I mean, all, I mean, we do get donations, but all that money, we donate to the 68 Hours Program, so there's like no money coming back, so, uh, the only money that we have for Old Home Week is, is the money that we get from the Bodys. So last year, I mean, there was, we had enough money, I mean, you, you didn't give us money last year, but we had enough, um, but now we're, our resources are kinda depleted. The only thing that I heard there that wasn't correct is we, that money doesn't go for the barber shoppers, that's a, a separate entity, that's, uh, Parks and Rec.
All right, so barber shoppers should come out of there then.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Okay.
In, if I could, in the interest of the reoccurring suggestion of eliminating warrant articles, is this something that they could just be budgeted through Parks and Recreation?
Could have its own...
Fourth of July, Old Home Day events?
Yeah, it's just an actual line item in the...
It's already kinda in there with fireworks and stuff.
Actually, it already has a line item in it, doesn't it? Fireworks, correct? Patriotic services?
Actually, it already has a line item. Is it fireworks? Patriotic Services?
Yeah, the fireworks is covered under, yeah, the Patriotic Purposes budget. Yeah.
But I thought Old Home Week in the budget had one there. I know we did years ago, so it might have been taken out.
Just a suggestion.
And obviously, if it was going to be a line item, then that number could probably be reduced as well.
Could probably be even higher. It used to be years ago. It used to be $10,000.
Well, and that's what some people said, oh, you're gonna, well, you know, we're doing what we do and we're doing it with what we have. So, you know, we're trying to make it bigger and bigger. So maybe someday we may need that money, but right now we don't.
Any other questions, concerns on Old Home Week, Article AA? The motion that we accept A is read.
Nope.
Minus the barber shoppers?
Yep. Second.
Want me to read it out? Do you have it? Nope. Okay. Motion made to approve Article AA with the deletion of barber shoppers, $3,000 is read, seconded by Sidney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Coffin Brook Property Sale. This is for the Selectmen. To see if the town will authorize Selectmen to sell a parcel of town-owned land located Coffin Brook Road, map 43, Lot 5, as known as the Old Burn Dump. It's a parcel to be put up for auction. I'm against it. Just to let you know, I know it says in the rationale that it'd be up to the owner to have it tested for any contaminations. I just don't think we should be selling any town land that we know that possibly could have contamination in it. We're putting it up for auction.
There's no doubt it's got contamination in it.
I just don't think we should. Myself. Think it'll come back to bite us? I think down the road it could.
Where is that?
Coffin Brook Road. Across from where the house burnt this fast. Yeah, 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 yeah. The only reason I say that is we hired, the town of Alton hired a company years ago to take all their waste oil and haul it out of here to Portland, Maine. It was just a few years ago, we were paying a monthly, a yearly fee to the state of Maine and to the Environmental Protection Agency because that company over there defaulted on their contract and contaminated the grounds. And we were, they were supposed to take all full responsibility. We still end up having to pay a certain amount for their cleanup over there. And that was, that was a few, I think it was a couple of years in a row. And I just feel this could come back to haunt us, even though it sits there that it's up to the owner to go and test it.
What kind of contaminants was it tested for?
Coffin Brook?
Yeah.
Nothing yet.
No, you're saying that the old...
The town has just covered it over. They've been laying there since Hurtill has been...
That's got everything in it that, Doc. Well, that's why I'm asking. It has not ever, it's never tested.
Never had it tested. It was capped before the state.
So selling it, it's contingent upon somebody's approval to purchase the property knowing that it's, and we know this.
It will state right in there that they have to, they have to test it themselves for contamination.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
So, two things.
Yes.
The person who's interested in the property came before you months, months ago, is well aware of potential contamination. I looked into the legality of selling a contaminated property with our attorney. As long as you are forthcoming when you put it up for sale, you can sell a contaminated piece.
That's my point.
Well, let me ask you something, though. Down the road, say the neighbors further down in Coffin Brook, all of a sudden they come into a contaminants. Who'd they come back on? The new owner of the land or the old owners of the land, which would be the town of Alton?
New owners if they disturbed the land.
But I'm not saying even if they don't disturb the land. Say finally something leaches out of that old burn dump.
It's going to be the current owner.
He's going to resume.
It'll be up to the current owner.
I think there's a way to write an airtight purchase and sales agreement.
There's protections there.
There's a way we could sell it without being liable.
It's the same thing with current DES violations. No matter which previous owner did the violation, the current owner has to fix it and pay the fees. We ran into this a couple of years ago down on Blueberry Lane.
They assume it.
That we're working on. Yeah.
They're going to assume the liability.
That's correct.
As long as it was disclosed.
As long as they know upfront, which we know they do.
Yeah, he's the, he's the one who told me about it. When he first came to see me, he wanted to buy it.
Not many town employees know it unless they've been here a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Not many residents know about it either unless they've been here a while. So. Article BB, Coffin Brook Property Sale. A motion to approve this as written. Ruben made the motion to approve Article BB as written, seconded by Virgil McDonald. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we get into the long ones. Article CC, DD, EE, FF, PG, HH. Article I, I. These are all the nonprofits. Article JJ, KK, and LL.
There are no new ones, correct?
There's 10 articles there.
Yep, but no new ones.
So I'm asking that Article CC, which starts with Alton Community Services also, which is asking for $12,500. American Red Cross, $2,200. CAP Nonprofit, $10,000. Caregivers of Southern Carroll County and Vicinity Nonprofit, $2,500. Casser, $500. Central Hampshire VNA Hostess On Profit, $12,000. Child and Family Services, New Hampshire Nonprofit, $2,500. Lake Tree Mental Health, $15,750. Life Ministries for $3,000. The New Beginnings Nonprofit, $1,575. They're all listed underneath Article CC. Right underneath the article listed how much they're asking for. When at deliberative session, somebody wants to go in and change that figure, they can or they can put $1 on it. But instead of having 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different articles you've got to read through, they all basically state the same.
But we put this to the voters, what, five years ago? Do they want to combine them? And the voters overwhelmingly said no, because there are some that they approve and some that they do not.
Yeah, I remember that.
But this way here, by listing them in a line, they could zero that line out or put $1 in there.
No, the people that come to deliberative session can do that, and that's not fair to the snowbirds who vote by absentee ballot.
All right. So my second question. Did all Articles CC, all the way through LL, submit a letter for these appropriations?
Yes.
Okay. Did any of these also put down on these articles how many families, families they service in Alton, New Hampshire?
Yes, or at least most of them.
And what their administrative fee was, administrative cost?
We don't have an application to ask for all of that. If we want to establish that...
I think it's something the town should establish.
Right, but I don't think it's fair to do it this year.
We already had a committee on that, and we made the form up and everything. Select would shot it down.
Well, I don't know. I don't believe I was. Alarm was on the committee. I was.
I think it's a little late this year.
This year it is.
To change the game plan.
So the other thing that I would bring to the table on that is specifically at our workshop that we went to up north on budgeting, they strongly suggested that we do not do sweep articles where we approve several things within one article. So again, I obviously echoed earlier the fact that we have so many articles.
He's not saying approve them all. He's just saying to list them so they can...
But they are all...
One they want.
It is, but it would be all one.
And that's, that's not fair to people who cannot attend deliberative.
The only thing I would like to say, and I will put it out there in this show, my chemistry, you know, last year, and this is my opinion, my fingers on this if you want, I don't mind.
Community services.
Article KK, Life Ministries Nonprofit, $3,000. I hope that we, your town funds that. Only reason being is there's about 30 families. I went out and just asked, and asked who the family were, but they represent about 30 families of Alton, like 11.
Yes.
Now, there's some families and there's some folks that have pride. And the last thing they're going to do is go to their local community pantry.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they don't want to be seen at some time. So they will go to another community. I think for the amount of money that Life Ministries nonprofit supports for our town and our community here, I think it's well worth it. I hope the town will do that. And to me, last year, to see that, the only article that only had a dollar appropriated to it was embarrassing myself. But I don't know how you folks feel, but I hope this year, if they support all the other articles, that they'll at least support this one also. That's all I have to say.
I would make a motion that we approve Article CC through Article LL.
Do we want to ask any input from the Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, if you have any questions or concerns. Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Land, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I've brought this issue up before in the past. It is my feeling, and I only speak for myself, that watching these articles over the past number of years and seeing that most of them, if not all of them, got approved except for maybe one or two over the years, I personally feel this entire nonprofit should be put into an operating part of the Selectmen's budget for them to spend as they do, as they wish, to have public hearings with the public so that you can make the decision. I feel confident the board would make the appropriate decision on what to fund and what agencies. You could limit the number of agencies that apply per year, and it would just save a lot of time at deliberative. It would save a lot of time at the booths. It's just how I personally feel. I mean, I totaled the amount up of the numbers that you just gave, and it came to $62,325. So I personally wouldn't have a problem with the board putting it under their reign and letting them take care of this. It's something that's going to come up every year. I do believe you should have an application process and have them justify the spending that they've done in Alton. I agree totally with that. But I feel confident that the board of selectmen would be able to cover all that and take care of that, as we expect you to do for running the entire town. So it's just my personal view.
Yeah, I'd just like to reaffirm the issue of knowing what each one of these nonprofits contribute to the town of Alton, other than taking our money. I can't vote on any, there's a couple of them that I know about that I can vote on, but the others, and I'm used to voting on them with a cover letter sent by each one explaining exactly what they've done in the past year for the town that they're requesting the money from. But I haven't seen it in Alton. I don't think you get it. So I'll, as a resident and a Budget Committee member, I'll have a hard time voting on most of these. Okay?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just actually a follow-up question to you, John. Are you saying, and I'm not quite sure, I followed what you said. I think I did.
So in the operating budget, there would be a nonprofit line under the Selectmen's budget.
Okay.
That's the X amount of dollars.
So then the Selectmen would then decide, as an example randomly, I want to give $2,000 to Life, you know, ministries and $4,000 to New Beginnings or vice versa?
It depends on who applies, how many they want to have applied.
Understood.
Have they been explained well enough to the board of selectmen to get those monies? Then the board of selectmen could have a public hearing for the public to say, we want to hear from you folks. Do you agree with us giving this money out? And then let them decide. There's a lot of people in town, Bob just said it, that he doesn't know a lot of these groups and things.
Understood.
Maybe that's why there's a lot of no votes.
I'm just trying to stand your proposed process. And that is, so then the Selectmen would, would conduct that process subject to the dollar amount that has been requested by the individual organization. So if, for example, Life...
It would be in their operating budget, which we would be reviewing as a budget.
But if Life Ministries said, I'd like to raise $2,000, then the Selectmen would go through the process but would not offer anything more than $2,000?
That's up to the board of selectmen to decide.
Okay, that's what I was, that was where I was trying to get at. Okay. In which case I would be concerned, and I'm no expert on that, that, you know, as a Selectman, that you'd be appropriating town funds to a nonprofit organization. I'm not sure if that would create additional issues, you know, aside from the organizations in the dol...
But that's because they're giving the money because the people are voting on it.
Right.
Because they're voting on it. I don't know if they can legally give our money without a vote for the people on that specific amount of money to a nonprofit individually.
And I wouldn't want to.
Each one has to be voted on separately.
These are petitions also.
Again, they're not petitions.
Not petitions.
They're not petitions. They're requests.
I thought they're petitions.
Their grandfather.
In the beginning.
Yes. In the beginning, they were petitioned, yes. And then they've fallen into what they call a grandfather status, as Sidney was saying.
As long as they do it annually and don't say it for a year.
Yes.
Have all these organizations picked up their money every year?
From last year, yes.
In a timely fashion, or do they get, have to be reminded?
In a timely fashion.
I imagine that they're five minutes after they get the notice available.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
I guess I would just echo, because again, we run into this every deliberative session, just justifications from, from these people.
Well, you folks have the right as a, as a committee to call these agencies up and say, we want you to come down and tell us why we should go along with this. So you, you as a committee, an elected board, could have that authority also versus us just saying we want more definition. You have the right to call and say, we're not going to recommend anything unless you come down before us and sit and describe us. And I think maybe that's what the Selectmen need to do.
We've done that one year.
Well, that's just one year. But this is constantly year after year. Things go on.
And I think last year, we had an individual limit it down to $1 on one of them, and that wasn't fair.
That was Life Ministries. That's the one I was talking about, yeah.
That's exactly another one.
It was kind of embarrassing.
People voted on.
We just may want to be prepared to, okay, when the deliberative sessions come up, in case there's any person in particular, okay, that hammers on the issue of have these people been, or have these organizations been vetted, you know, what is the process for them to apply? Just be ready for some of those answers, and maybe we can prevent those reoccurring questions from what might be the same individual.
We do invite each nonprofit organization to attend the deliberative session. They wish to answer questions.
Oh, no, no. Understood. And what I was referring to is there's been questions over in the past, okay?
Some do.
That have said, you know, are these, how do these people even get on the ballot? Which is a procedural issue, which I think you answered this evening. Okay? So we just may want to be prepared for that, okay, in the hopes that if we answer that during the deliberative session, maybe we won't get those questions again from the same individual, okay, on each and every item.
You, sir, are an optimist.
Okay, that could be, okay? And all I'm suggesting is if we're prepared, maybe, and...
Okay, motion is ours.
I got one question. Why can't we just get an annual cover letter from each week that applies, that reappears every year?
They do.
With what they know, what they contribute to the town of Alton?
Well, this is where it has to be worked on next year by the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Do we know of any other towns that put their nonprofit donations into town budgets, operating budgets?
I do.
I don't.
Thank you.
I don't know of any, but these two do. So maybe next year they can bring it up. Okay, motion was made and seconded to approve Article CC all the way to Article LL as written.
Who seconded that?
Who seconded that? I don't think we did.
No, I made the motion.
I seconded. I did, I seconded.
Okay.
You seconded, you did?
Sure.
Virgil seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So folks, that ends the new business warrant articles. At this point, there's no minutes to approve tonight. There's no town administrator report. So at this, there's no approval of the consent agenda?
Actually, there was a Selectmen's report, real quick.
About tonight.
Oh, okay.
We only said we were going to review only the warrant articles.
Right.
So public input two, one and two, open up at this point. It's a five minutes per person on any government town business.
Okay, I'd take that up. Okay. And that is on Article Q, the master plan consultant. I would just reiterate the fact, I think that that is absolutely critical as it's the backbone for where the town is looking to go, should be going. There's a lot of natural assets within the town, the lake, the bay, Mount Major, I'm sure there's several others, okay? And I would, I would suggest that perhaps $25,000 isn't enough, okay? It may be grossly underestimated, and this would be an area that if we were going to go out on a limb, okay, and really look to put money into this and make it a commitment, okay? I think this is, I think this is it.
That is just a stat to get us...
No, I understand.
Let him finish.
And again, I have variance in what something like this costs. It could $300,000, okay? Could be $100,000. No idea. All I'm suggesting is, okay, maybe, you know, if we spend $25,000, it's enough to go off, then we have a bunch of people that jump in that really don't have a lot of experience in it, and the plan is, and it ends up being a little what everybody was hoping after we've spent the $25,000. Maybe would we be better, and again, I'm picking a random number for illustrative purposes, maybe the right number, $100,000 to have somebody come in and actually do it suit to us. Then you have a qualified plan that everybody can look on, look at, got it?
But you can certainly suggest at the Budget Committee level, and they can change the number.
Oh, sure. No, no, understood. So I'm just speaking as a general taxpayer who lives in the town, thinking, I think that would be a great idea.
I hope you wouldn't.
I had, myself personally.
But go ahead, Virgil.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We had the planner talk to the Wolfborough planner that worked on the, he was a consultant for it. And that's what he suggested to put in there to get started, to get a consultant in and get things set up.
Understood.
Just to get it rolling. He's going to take a year, he says it's going to take a year or a little better, just to get things set up and put forward.
Agreed.
Then they're going to come when they get the right amount, when they figure everything out and what direction and how much for each.
Right. But I think what I heard tonight from the CIP members, okay, was $25,000 to get it started, and then we, okay, would take it over and run with it.
No.
Okay, that's fine.
That I misunderstood. Figured that we were going to keep the consultant right in with it.
Great. And I think that that's a great idea.
To where it's got to be.
The only other thing that I would mention, which was on Article BB, Coffin Brook Property Sale, and if there is concern about, you know, potential insolvency of the buyer, and after that insolvency, there's a determination of contamination which eventually finds its way back to the town, okay? We, as a company, get involved in that on a very regular basis, and there's insurance company, coverage for that called property transfer liability, specifically designed for real estate transactions of contaminated property. Extremely common,